Okay. Any minutes to sign? Just, that's fine. We'll catch up to them.
Yes, we will eventually.
Okay. What's first on the agenda?
First on the agenda is a rezoning request to the R three district for a piece of property on Doppel Street. The planning commission is public hearing for that rezoning. The proposal is a conditional rezoning, or we've advertised it as a conditional rezoning in event that the property owners would like to offer any proffers. I do not have any in hand, but if the planning commission does choose to recommend adding proffers to the project, or adding proffers to the proposal, then those proffers would stay in place until the town council confirms. If the town council approves with the proffers, then it's approved. If they do not accept those proffers, they would have to come back to planning commission, okay? But it is advertised as residential, a conditional rezoning from the R two district to the R three district. If approved, the applicant intends to correct, erect a double wide manufactured home on the property. The conditional rezoning request is for tax map number fifty-eight nineteen eight A three, and is also known as the former five oh eight Doppel Street. If you remember, that building or that structure was burned by the fire department probably three or four years ago. Is that about right? Okay. So the property is of appropriate size, and even if it were not at the time, it would be considered a grandfather piece of property, and if side setbacks and all setbacks could be matched or met, then the town would permit a zoning permit to be issued and thus a building permit. The purpose of the rezoning is required in the R two district in which it currently sits. The property is located approximately here. It would face the railroad tracks, if you're familiar, and then Doppel Street is between the railroad tracks and this property. If y'all are familiar with where that is.
I know where you are.
You know where I'm at? Division Street runs in an east-west orientation. It comes out the main street and then dead ends at the railroad tracks. And a right-hand turn of Doppel Street, which continues-
It's like diagonally behind Mitchell's.
Diagonally behind Mitchell's, and up Doppel Street continues to a point where the town's right way runs out and becomes railroad right away on the property. This is the property approximately here, and zone R two. R two allows a whole series of different things. It allows townhouses, it allows duplexes, it by right, it allows single-family homes by right. But what it does not permit is manufactured housing, and that's where we're at tonight. It may very well have a for sale sign on the tree. It's kind of a vacant lot. Me very well. It's directly behind a house that we built several years ago in our weatherization program that actually fronts on Stokes Street.
Didn't we just do one of these over on Center Street?
That's why I didn't totally tell the McFarlands that this was going to be an impossibility. There was one approved on Center Street, and it was done the exact same way, and I just parroted exactly how we did the zoning for that. If you remember, Ms. Jones, Sandra Jones, I believe is her name, applied on behalf of her daughter, and her daughter put a double wide in over there. And I think the request is pretty upfront. I think some people could say, well, you're spot zoning, but that comes in to where the conditional rezoning would be important, that this could not be converted into a duplex, and these are the kinds of conditions. This would be strictly for a single family, in which I assume is the plan, a single-family manufactured home. So everybody in the audience and everybody here tonight understand, a modular home is considered the same as a stick-built house by building code. Down on Lester Street, there was a modular home put up on Lester Street next to Ms. Hardaway's home, and that was two pieces. It looked like, you know, it came on the back of a truck and it was put together and it was set on the foundation, but it was built to a modular home standard. What is not permitted in R two is a manufactured home, and that's what we traditionally think of as a single-wide trailer or manufactured home, or a double-wide manufactured home. And the request is to rezone it conditionally, and I certainly think the condition should include that it can only be used for a single-family home. And the zoning would not permit it to be, say the home was destroyed at some point and they wanted to come back and build apartments, or they wanted to build some other more intense housing type, that would be in defiance of what the understanding or the agreement was upfront. That's where the condition, I think, is most appropriate. There is a copy of the survey on the back of the property, and you can see the property that's listed as parcel A is there, and that was the former home that was burned down three or four years ago. The fire department helped us get that one cleaned up. There are a couple of things that I would ask you considering your proffer statement. There is an outstanding lien for the demolition of the house, okay? And we would ask that that be paid off at the time the building permit is issued, okay? About fifteen hundred dollars outstanding still owed to the town for the demolition of the old house. And there have been payments made on it. They haven't been neglected. There have been some payments made on it because the number was much higher, but there's still about an outstanding fifteen hundred dollars, and we would ask that that be a condition of the approval, that they would have to satisfy that at the time of closing, or at the time of the permenition. I think he's going to open the public hearing.
All right, we shall open the public hearing on the requests by the McFarlands to conditionally rezone their property from R two to R three. Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this?
And I did send out the adjoining property owner letters. I didn't hear back from anybody. Did you?
Did Mr. Van Orbach state your case well enough?
Yes.
So this is Ms. McFarland right here in the red.
Ms. McFarland over here, okay.
Are you all the ones purchasing the property? Okay.
He's a traitor. He left the East End for over there.
Okay. So the neighbors have been notified, and nobody's here to speak against it that's aware of?
They did. They notified a second time. The good town council received yet another letter from the council public hearing.
All right. My position is if it doesn't cause, if it doesn't bother the neighbors, it's okay with me.
If you hadn't looked at the crisis of construction lately?
Yes.
It has really gone through the roof for traditional or stick-built houses, and I guess this is an alternative. It is a piece of property that's not really doing much right now, and I don't think the Joneses have created a any consternation in the neighborhood with the previous approval that was done probably a year and a half ago.
Do you have a list of proffers?
A list of proffers? I don't have them written down, but I would like to include at least those two that is specific to a single family.
Only a single-family home.
A single-family home, and they must, they must pay off the fifteen hundred before they can do anything.
Pay off the lien for the demolition. That's correct. And that logically would be done anyhow if the property were transferred, something like that, because it is recorded at the courthouse, would be picked up, and we want to make sure that that is satisfied before permits issued.
Okay. Further comments? Anybody inclined to make a motion?
I agree. I agree with you that if the neighbors have come to speak against it, then I guess they must not have a problem with it.
Okay.
Would you like to close the public hearing?
I would like to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Let me think long.
You read my mind.
We work so well together.
We gotta make a motion now, right?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we let them rezone, but with the proffers. So you understand what I'm saying? In other words, I want them to give you this place, but you have to take care of the proffers.
Single-family home.
Only for a single family. He can't come back three years from now and say, I want all the proffers here, put addition on here, a second unit or anything like that.
And pay off the fifteen hundred.
Yeah, that's what I said, pay off the fifteen hundred.
The outstanding lien.
The outstanding lien.
Okay.
In a single-family home.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second then.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
All right, so this request was approved by the planning commission. Now their recommendation is to approve it to council. We will meet on July eighteenth. Y'all will get another round of letters and let you know the date and time, and then council will make the final approval.
Mr. Colburn used to regularly remind us that they did not have to go by our recommendations. The elder, Mr. Colburn.
Okay, we have really two applications that have come to us from the Cannons, David and Renee Cannon, and these applications are for residential uses above, really two structures downtown. The first of which is one twenty-one South Main Street. One twenty-one, which is the former SWCI structure. I think that the intention logically would continue that there would be a business or a commercial venture on the first floor, although I think they've moved out, have they not? They've already moved out, so at some point-
What business was that?
SWCI. It was Mayo Gravit's old law.
Okay, gotcha.
And they're requesting to, and we'll deal with this one first because we did advertise them separate, because they are separate properties. The first one is one twenty-one South Main Street, and they're requesting to put in one residential unit on the second floor of that building. And it would be an apartment to be rented, I assume. And in the general business district, what is called a conditional use permit is required. Bingo. Exactly what we're talking about, okay? And I think Jason's got it kind of finished up there. If you'd been up there, he's got a office type of thing, and I assume that would be transitioned into a single residential unit. I think there is some parking out back, and the requirement would be at a minimum two parking spaces for that one unit, but if you go to the rear, there is some parking associated with that, with that unit, okay? So I think they can meet the two-space obligation for that request.
When you're talking about the one twenty-one and then the two-hundred properties, is this two separate things?
We have-
You don't need to when I'm separate.
We do it, we do it based on the location of the property, not just the individual.
Doesn't the parking become intertwined at some point?
Well, I think it can if you go back there. I think Ken Walden parks in that general vicinity. I think the Blackstone Restaurant also parks in the back there. Hawthorne and Hawthorne, Joe T. Feath's building, which is Hawthorne and Hawthorne now, but the real estate company is back there. But I think if you look to the rear of the building, there's enough width that two spaces could be specifically identified for that property. Does it get intertwined? Probably. I would say people park in each other's parking spaces and then see if they don't.
Okay, maybe I read that. All right, so we again have to open the public hearing.
You read my mind.
That's right. And this is regarding the request for a conditional use permit from this old building LLC to permit an apartment to be constructed on the second floor of one twenty-one South Main Street.
And again, adjoining property owner letters were sent out.
Okay.
For both, for both requests.
Okay, and there is a dish, and the code, the ordinance requires two parking places, right? Okay. And that can be provided. Is there anybody wish to comment?
You don't have the proffers in here, right? You don't have any proffers in here?
No, this is not advertised as a conditional rezoning. A proffer, a proffer signal only title a conditional rezoning, but a conditional use permit. But I do think you have the ability to put conditions on the request. And I think it's been done in the past with lighting or waving parking requirements, those kinds of things, but I don't think there's any need for any, any specific conditions, because the parking can be provided.
Is there anything you all would like to add, or?
Well, we were planning on putting in a Tesla charging station back in the back of it. It's already got good lighting. It's already got security cameras, so, and it's actually-
You can actually park six cars back in those.
It's had, yeah, six cars parked back there. Jason and I used to have quite a few people.
The charging station being for personal use?
No, it's for, for the tenants.
Not public is what you, is that what you're driving at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we were going up, but this really involves the other building. So we were going to talk about that with the other building. We were going to offer that if the town was interested, they could put charging stations on the side of, this is two oh one, which is the old Peebles Trends building. We were gonna, we're getting, asking for, see, that's talking about the different zones, anyway. So I'm jumping the gun probably, but we were going to do the same for in the back of the building, of that building. But if y'all were interested in having something like that on a street, I know you had talked about y'all are going to be doing something back, I don't know where it is, somewhere over here?
What she's referring to, the town of Blackstone has a lease agreement with the railroad for all of the property, parallel between Brown Street and the railroad, actual tracks or the toe of the slope that goes up. There's actually a lease in place that we pay for every year. About two years ago, we came up with a plan as a result of the Trend request and others downtown, whereby the town was going to construct a parking lot. You know, would provide approximately twenty-five parking spaces, pretty tight in there because you can't build right to the toe of the slope. It's a twenty-five foot from the center line of the closest track, I think, is the requirement. And in that, the plan was to put in some charging stations. We're always looking for ways to make people want to come to town. We sell electricity. It can be a bad idea, especially if we could find some grant monies or something like to do it.
So we thought if they, there's already parking beside of that building, that that might be a great place to have some chargers right there. Kind of you stick your credit card in, go.
We just, we've got to find ways that we can get the electricity to it easily and all those kinds of things.
Right.
Without having to dig too much stuff up and bust sidewalks out and all that sort of thing. But we do think, and this really is the brainchild of Mr. Watkins's son, who has electric vehicle, telling me about tourism that is associated where people are looking for places to stop and perhaps eat lunch while they're charging and that sort of thing. I'm learning a little more about quick chargers and slower chargers and that kind of thing, so I think that there's some difference, but-
The problem with the charging stations that you're looking into, they're expensive as places right now.
They're what?
They're expensive.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
With a commercial downstairs and residential upstairs, does the residential have to have a separate entrance?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I can tell you Trend has a separate entrance, okay? But if we go over to the old Barrett Grocery Company building, there's a common entrance. If you go in, the old gun stores are on the left, and if you follow that back through there, you could get up to the, to the units that are on the second floor. So I don't know the actual answer, but it's going to have to meet building code requirements, whichever they'd be, and you may know them better than me.
The Gravit building does have separate entrance.
It does, huh?
It does. It goes straight up stairs.
I just don't know if it would be mandated or required. And Trend has a separate entrance, if you notice, you get the main building and then there's a set of steps to the right that would go up in there.
Any other? Anybody wish to speak? Any other questions?
One comment that I would make, and this is observant of the Cannon stewardship of their property. And I've noticed over the years, they've been good stewards of their property, so, you know, it's property that I believe will be well taken care of. I noticed myself, I watched them when, I was still in my office when they were painting that building where Al Capoco is, where the old Curry Record office used to be, and they were the family effort themselves where they rented that lift, and they were up there, you know, free people doing all that painting themselves, and they do a good job with what they work on.
Thank you. That's kind of lovely.
All right.
Close the public hearing?
Yes. She'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to-
I was hoping you would. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the next, I don't know which is, a conditional use permit for an apartment on the second floor of-
I think we've got it listed as two oh seven and two oh nine South Main Street.
And I think their address is going to be two oh nine A for, or A and B maybe.
The request is very similar, but a little different in that there may be space prohibition for four spaces. And I think the Cannons during the public hearing process can discuss how they want to try to address the parking.
So upstairs is going to be two apartments.
It'd be two apartments. And two oh seven currently, is that the law office?
Yeah, so it'd be one across above where two oh seven is, and then one across where two oh nine is.
And two oh nine is the hair salon?
No, that's actually a, it's like-
Al Capoco.
Al Capoco's is two oh nine, and Mary's is two oh seven. Actually, there are two oh seven A and B.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we would be two oh nine upstairs, A and B. Which we might have already done that with the post office, because at one point the post office was making sure that they continued to have postal workers that could deliver mail. So we actually put up a box and created an address for upstairs.
One unit would be above Mary and the law office, and one unit would be above Al Capoco.
Exactly. And there is separate entrance for that as well.
I think it's a little-
Above them?
It goes up into a door in between the two, in between Al Capoco's and all about here. There's a door, and it has a large stairwell that would, how wide is that? It's about a six-foot wide stairwell that goes up. And so then when you got up, you'd have a foyer area, and then you would go to the left, go to one apartment or to the right, to the other apartment.
And how many parking spaces do you think you can get in the back? Oh, absolutely, sure.
Well, we're not sure.
One moment. Let's open the public hearing.
I was jabbering away during the closing.
Go right ahead. Observe the formalities.
Thank you, thank you. So, right now, unfortunately, the back of our building is not as pretty as the front of our building. So I'll show you the back of our building, and y'all can pass that around if you can. So Al Capoco's has, there's a little shed, you'll see, and he stores a lot of his canned goods and things like that back there. But we have an area that we were going to open up to him. It used to be the boiler room, so we're going to open up this space, and then we have another space in the back of the building that we've just kept as storage. So we're going to open that up to Al Capoco so that he can no longer have to use that shed that's in the back, and instead, he would just access everything from inside his restaurant. So that would move that particular item, and we were going to move the gas tanks, and then have enough room we look, think, to be able to parallel park in the back of the building. The building's fifty-foot wide, so we don't think we can get four spaces, but we, or actually, because that's how many we would need. We think we could probably only get three, and maybe only two really comfortably, because people don't parallel park as well as they used to. But now they've got cars that do parallel park nicely for you, if you can afford one of those. But anyway, right now, most people are just kind of going eh eh eh. So, we also thought, which we kind of talked a little tiny bit to you about, this is Farmer's, his trash thing, dumpster. Anyway, he tends to keep it a little bit more in the street mainly because, and Raul, do y'all know Raul from Al Capoco's, the owner? Anyway, Raul has issues with, well, we're getting the new dumpster, because we have to move it. So we're getting the new dumpster, but he still has issues with flies. So his door, it's very, very close to where his door is. So what we were hoping is, if you can see on that picture, that maybe, and I think Al might like that idea too, to move, let me try to see.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, can you look at any of them?
He's our historian. He knows everything about everything.
Anyway, we were thinking, what if we moved these dumpsters over here to the curb? So when they get dumped, when it rains, then the water and stuff could go down that way, and maybe that would open up this area and people could drive right through the middle. What do you think?
I think it's going to be a traffic obstruction. You put it on the side, that's really the travel lane.
Because see, the hits is kind of a traffic obstruction now.
It is very much an obstruction.
Looks like we're leaving a cannon kind of in the middle of the parking, or in the middle there.
Raul stays closer, but it does create flies unfortunately that want to scoot inside their doors. So I understand why they want them scooted over. So if it is possible, that would be cool. And then that also opens up our spot here to be able, if we move that and that to be able to parallel park.
When you buy a dumpster, I'm just throwing an idea out, instead of having two dumpsters back there, would it make sense, when, if you're going to buy one anyhow, buy a six cubic yard, which is a larger dumpster? And then both Farmer's and-
What size is his? Are both of these the small ones?
I think either smaller four.
We just assumed they were the big ones, but they're not.
That looks like a four cubic yard. I can go back there and look at them.
Yeah, we tried to look, but we couldn't find any measurements on that one.
One idea, just maybe have one less dumpster back there.
No, that's a great idea. That's a great idea. The same thing, they probably could do the same thing for their, this thing here is where they dump their oil and yucky stuff. So they each one are doing that. That would be nice if they could combine that as well.
So you're saying instead of having one at Farmer's, one at Al Capoco's, have one big dumpster?
They were proposing to buy a new dumpster anyhow and replace one at Al Capoco's.
Just buy a big one that they both can use.
And then Al Capoco's and-
How about eight yards instead of four yards?
Use it as well.
I was saying, instead of having a four-yard dumpster, they could get an eight-yard dumpster.
We only do six and eight, I mean, six and four.
Oh, six, okay. Well, then six is the, that's, so six is the biggest your truck picks up.
We can get a six with taller sides like we have at McDonald's. Because they get so many boxes and they were just overflowing.
Right.
We got a special made dumpster for McDonald's. Because they have, there's still a six cubic yard inside, but it's taller. We have sides on it with a sliding door.
I got you.
You can make them a little bigger, but there's still the footprint of the six cubic yard.
Anyway, we'd like to make it prettier back here, and to give parking back here, the extra parking that we would need would have to come from our other building. Or, we have another option. We looked them up. My husband can explain what they are.
It's basically a auto stacker, a lift, that you'll find in some of these parking garages where you pull into and it lifts up, and then another car can park right under it. So that's a-
They're popular down in Naples where, if you don't have, huh?
Walter Mac Osborn has one in his garage.
Does he? So that's an option too, that we're willing to do, and then we like the idea of just putting the charging stations back there for the cars, just because we know it's the future, so.
What you're saying, the charging system is basically for you and your tenants, right?
Well, if we, yes. Actually, I wanted, I mean, when I say tenants, like at Al Capoco's, if he had people that wanted to go eat and dine, then that would be great for them to be able to pull up, charge, because none of these things happen really fast, and then they could eat at his restaurant. I'd hate for everybody to just to come over and use my electricity and not dine at our restaurants and things like that. But I can't control what people do, so it would be open, but we would not be advertising, except for Al Capoco's would probably advertise, because he is, it is behind his building. So he could advertise that charging station behind his building.
A, a charging station.
We're going to put two behind this building, and then just one behind of the Walker building is what I'll call it. Sarah and Jason Walker's old building, other here, I don't know what to call it. We don't have names for our buildings yet.
But the, but what you could offer currently is, you can, you do think you have two?
Yes, and we know we have at least two, possibly three.
And, but you have excess-
Four to six at the other one.
Behind one twenty-one.
Yes.
So what, what you're saying is that you can get four parking spaces, one way or the other, am I right?
Between the two properties that they own, they could provide enough for the one and enough for the two apartments at the other one.
So they can meet that requirement. So I need to know- So they can meet that requirement, that's all I need to know.
What happens if the one up the street is sold at some point in time?
Then you have to close the whole day, that's all it is to.
Or you could have it into the deed as deeded access.
I'm kidding.
Well, the, at least, some form of notification has to be out there, right, Philip?
Some form of notification.
Yeah.
That two of the spaces are reserved for the other property.
Correct.
And do that as a legal, I guess it could be an deed restriction, um, never seen it before.
Yeah.
And, uh, could be something written in that two spaces on the property, if they were ever sold, um, and file them at the courthouse and, and.
Right.
See, but I, I don't know if the enforcement is really practical. You know, I don't know, it may gum up a.
Well, we don't want is up, uh, downtown apartments with lacking parking, correct?
We Trend has zero of ours, if you remember that.
Right.
They just, their four corners of the building are the four corners of the property, so there was no.
Uh-huh.
Providing, I think it's two spaces up there.
Which, which y'all now own that building as well, don't you?
We do.
Yes, so they have bought.
That was the building I was saying if the town would like, we're not opposed to them putting things on the side of our building. We think that looks like a great spot to be able to, that would be on the, on the street, mm-hmm, that there are.
I've never seen a deed restriction like that, that one property to the next, um, what we did.
The neighbors are themselves.
We did a lease agreement.
Right.
This may be a solution. Uh, when Dave McCormick and this body and the town council approved, and give us a microphone.
Oops, sorry.
When Dave McCormick, uh, received approval to do his, uh, brewery and, and residences at the old town shop, if you remember, there was an understanding about the parking. That he would be able to use the parking across the street.
Right.
And that was done as a lease agreement, which expired when he bought the property from the town, okay? But, uh, that may be the way to do it, is do it as a lease agreement of some sort.
Yeah, and I guess the. A conditional use permit for one twenty-one South Main Street should include the provision.
That two spaces will be provided.
Two spaces will be provided for two oh nine and two oh seven.
And we can go back and revise that motion if you'd like to do that?
That's what I'd like to do, yeah. Okay. That was your motion, right, Tom?
I think it's your motion.
No.
All right, so were there, were there any other comments about this, about two oh nine? Everybody go with that one, if you want to close that one?
Yes.
Okay. So now would you like to go back to the motion for one twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay, let's do that.
Tom.
And will we amend the motion to include two, two parking spaces?
For two oh nine and two oh seven.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Great, Tom, you, you worded it so well.
You did a good job.
And second, all in favor, please say aye.
Okay.
Okay, now.
Now we will do the two oh nine.
The two oh nine and two oh seven, two apartments in the upper level there. Do I hear a motion? Alan. Thanks.
We accept those properties that have residential, uh, above the, you know, upstairs.
Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
All right, and just for clarification for the public, the one-two-one South Main Street is only one apartment. The two oh seven, two oh nine is two apartments, correct?
No, two each, just two toes.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you good with the planning commission? Anything you could ramble on about?
They are, they have set aside an urn that fits it up.
Okay.
I have some neighbors here tonight, I'm just, what brings you all here to this?
From the DCA, DCA is six thirty.
Ah!
If y'all want to stay for that, go run in. Okay, so let's learn at six thirty-five.
Okay. So, so done.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.